Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies. My name is Jim Addington. I live in Geek City. And I'm proud to say I'm a lifelong Scott County. I'm here today to ask support for this resolution. As Joan has said, it isn't seen that the Clinch River Park may or may not come into existence, but it's for the funding of our existing parks. And I can speak. When I was a young man growing up, the closest state park was Hungry Mother State Park in Marion, 75 miles. Our roads weren't as good then, but it was such a treat to get to go to Hungry Mother State Park. The state has done a good job in providing parks for those of us that live in southwest Virginia. We've got a state museum in Big Stone Gap. We've got Natural Tunnel State Park, and we've got the park in Lee County. Now, from an economic standpoint, just to give you a figure, this study was done by Virginia Tech, their College of Business, and they examined every state park in the park system and what it meant to the local economy. And Natural Tunnel, the total effect is $6.3 million. That is a big boost, and it's going to get better. When you think of all that Natural Tunnel has, the cabin rentals, the campground, it's a modern campground, swimming pool, and now with the addition of a Daniel Boone Interpretive Center, you're going to see a real influx of tourists. So it's going to be a big boost to the economy. The $6.3 million, and I know Natural Tunnel pays no real estate taxes, but in lieu of real estate taxes, they generate about $30,000 of sales taxes that go to the county and the state. So I just want to go on with this, being in support of this resolution, to fund fully the Virginia state park system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here and your patience. All right, any other discussion? Mr. Mann, would you like to restate your motion?
I will make a motion and we approve the resolution as presented to the board.
All right, Mr. Mann makes a motion to support this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hood, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Vickers, we will move on if we could. Your yellow sheet. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one there. We amended it and I still pass it up. Item 10B, which we added, concerns a letter of support for Clinch River Health Services. Who wants to take that?
Do you want me to do it? Danny?
Yes, you want to. You have the prior information, so I don't, so.
Okay. We received a request from Carolyn Bowen, the Executive Director of Clinch River Health Services, and they are preparing a service area competition grant application, and one of their requirements is to get a letter of support from the community and from organizations that they collaborate with. And she has asked us if we can do that letter of support for their grant application.
All right. When she sent the email to me, and I forwarded it on, all of y'all probably seen it, and which I'm currently serving as President of that Board, and I will abstain if we vote on this, but it's very important, and it's a competitive grant that needs a letter of support, a letter of support from this Board. So anyway, it's very important that they get this. They may get it, they may not, it's very competitive, but hopefully they will. Let me say something about that clinic over there. It's not a free clinic, but it's almost 4,000 people uses that. And I got a pie chart not long ago showing zip codes where people come from to go to that facility, and it's phenomenal where they're coming from to get their medical health care there. And I've been on that Board for a long time, and it employs 37 people, and you have the providers, you have two doctors, you have nurse practitioners, and the people working there, it's just phenomenal the service they provide. We built a new building there, it finished in 2012, it was a total project of about $2.5 million project. I remember there was some issues back, CBS did a thing about the health wagon and stuff, and they used that area as a backdrop to show that how much is needed. Now, this comes a little bit here, but you need to know this, and they wouldn't go a mile down the road to show this $2 million facility that was just built and was open. And folks, that facility provides health care to people. They have a sliding fee scale, and it helps the people that can't afford. It's not free, but you can get a lot for a little bit of money. The Pharmacy Connect program there, they did between $2 and $3 million a year in medication that goes through there. And so it's a big asset to the county with the number of people they employ, and I've sat in there for a long time, and it's really a good asset to the county. So in approving this letter of support, it's very important that we do that. But I want to plug them a little bit, I intended to do that, but I want people to know, if you get a chance to drive by and look at it, it's phenomenal what they've done there. And it was built on property that was purchased from the EDA, it's 10 acres that we bought back before we built the building, and where it's located right beside the Horse Park, and it's a great asset to this county. So this letter is important that we get this, and maybe get this grant for them, but doing real well financially, they're doing great, but it's just a good entity to have here in Scott County.
All right. We appreciate those comments. All right, we'll open the floor for a motion for a letter of support from the staff to support their cause. Mr. Jeter makes a motion that we write a letter of support for Clinch River Health Services?
I'll second it.
Mr. Compton, seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And I'll vote aye.
All right. Mr. Mann abstains because he's on the Board. Opposed, anybody? All right. We'll get that done, and I think that has to be done right away. Is that ready?
Right away, Mr. Hood.
Okay.
I'll be after this round of the ayes, I think.
All right, thank you. All right. Amy, let's go ahead and go through yours. We'll get a couple of little things knocked out here, and then we'll take a break.
Please transfer $3,583.50 from Information Systems Software Maintenance 12540-3320 to Capital Outlay 12540-8102, and transfer $94,599 from Community Work Program 25000, and $92,879 from Regional Jail 33100-5638 to the following items. $200 to County Administrators Travel 12110-5510, $119,739 to Regional Jail Operations 33100-5641, and $67,539 to Regional Jail Debt Service 33100-5642. And that's all of the transfers.
All right. Any questions on these transfers as presented?
Was that the Community Work Program that '94? Was that the program that we added originally? I didn't don't feel with it.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion, we approve the transfers. All right, Mr. Compton makes a motion, we approve the transfers as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Herron, seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. We'll get those done. These few appointments, let's go ahead and move through that, and then we'll stop, okay? Tina?
You have one appointment to make to the Chapter 10 Board. Randy Gilmer has been serving on that Board, and he did reapply, and he received no other applications.
All right. That is the Chapter 10 Mental Health and Mental Retardation Board. It's a three-year term. Open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Randy Gilmer.
Mr. Jeter nominates Randy Gilmer. Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, we vote a citizen and elect by a motion.
Mr. Herron makes a motion that we close nominations and appoint a commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Compton, seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Mr. Gilmer will serve on that Board again.
You have three appointments to make to the Economic Development Authority. The first one is a four-year term, and Eric Lane has been serving, and he did reapply. The second one, Greg Baker has been serving, and he did reapply. The third one, Philip Smith, has been serving, and he resigned from that position. You received one other application from Bradford J. Bowen, and that's all you have on that.
All right. Let's take these, if we could, one position at a time, and we'll deal with them one at a time. So the first four-year term for EDA Board, open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Eric Lane.
Mr. Herron nominates Eric Lane for this first position. All right, any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination ceases, both by a commission.
Mr. Mann makes a motion, nomination ceases, appoint by a commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hood, seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Mr. Lane will go back in his spot. We'll open the second four-year term on the EDA Board. Open the floor for nominations.
Nominate Greg Baker.
Mr. Jeter nominates Greg Baker. Other nominations? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to appoint by a commission?
So moved.
Mr. Hood makes a motion to close nominations, appoint by a commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mann, seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. And our last would be our unexpired term. What's left on that term, do we know?
Let me check.
Well, I mean, it's all right if you don't know right off the bat. I know it's Mr. Smith's term, but.
It expires in January of '19.
January of '19, so about a year. Okay? Unexpired term, I'll open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Brad Bowen.
Mr. Hood nominates Brad Bowen. Other nominations? All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion, nomination ceases, both by a commission.
All right, Mr. Mann makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that fills those.
You have one appointment to make to the Library Board. Donna Carter has been serving in that position, and she resigned, and you did not receive any applications.
All right. Is anyone here who has a name that they've talked to about Library Board? All right. Do we want to re-advertise and try to work on that one?
I would say so.
All right, let's table that until our next meeting, and we'll re-advertise. I might know someone who would serve on that particular Board, we'll try to get that done by January. All right, is that it? Thank you, ma'am. Lot done this morning in a short time, and I appreciate you all. If we could, we'll take, we'll break until 10:15. I need to go break, and we'll come back to order. I've had a request for five minutes. Mr. Marshall has information, he'd like to contribute to the meeting. Bobby?
Bobby Marshall from Nicholsville. I'm sure you're not here to raise cane or no fuss about anything, but we requested the Board sent to VDOT for getting additional money for gravel roads. Some of you will remember the fuss that I made a while back about the situation with gravel roads. I'll try to be as brief as I can, and if you don't understand what I'm talking about, I'll certainly try to answer the questions. The money set up for VDOT, for our secondary roads, we used to get a copy, or we, the supervisors, got a copy of VDOT's six-year plan, and there was two sections of that six-year plan. One of them was called regular construction, and the other was improving, I don't remember the exact title, but it was improving the gravel roads and paving them. And that's what we are interested in, is getting our gravel roads paved. Well, there is another thing that VDOT does is rule additions, and you folks have had very little to do with that for the past few years. But if I understand the code right, and we have an attorney that can answer the question, or they look it up, and I certainly don't expect her to know the code from cover to cover. But on rule additions, they could only take in roads in rule additions as long as they had the money to improve those roads and bring them up to the standards for a paved road, and they had to be paved with that money. Well, what VDOT was doing years ago, and I have records that shows this, they took in rule additions way over and above the amount of money that they had to improve those roads. Well, what they did with the roads then, they brought them into the system as gravel roads. Well, on the six-year plan, they had two plans, as I said. One was for general construction, and that was roads, they're now rebuilding bridges over the streams and the approaches to those bridges, widening of curves, dangerous curves that's been done on roads that's already paved, adding guardrail. That was the money for the regular constructions. And then, of course, the money for the gravel roads, improving them. Well, what VDOT was doing at that time, the roads that they had taken in as rule additions that they didn't have the money for, they were putting them on the regular construction And you could do the same thing now, if I understand the code right. There is a certain amount of money, a percentage, that you can take from the regular construction schedule and apply it to your gravel roads. That's what they were doing then. It was legal to do it, and that was one of my big complaints. Not that they were paving the roads from that money, but the way they were doing it. An example, the road that I live on was and still is a gravel road. There was another gravel road just a couple of miles up from me that went on this other plan, on the regular construction plan. A couple of years after the road that I live on went on the six-year plan for the gravel roads. That road was paved in 2004 or '05, and here it is 2018, and I'm still living on gravel road. I said, "Take the gravel roads, put them all on the same list, and pave them in sequence, pave them on the year that it should. Don't show priority." And I know that some of you can remember the fusses that I made. Treat us all equal. But there is, you can, or at least VDOT did at that time, and as far as I know, it was legal. Now, what changes they've made for the past several years when they come in with the six-year plan, all I have seen is one sheet of paper with the gravel roads on it that they're proposing to pave. Then, they showed all of the money on our secondary roads, of what they planned to do, where they planned to do it, what the costs, and everything. So I wish I had thought of this while VDOT's people were here, and let them answer. But I do have, and I know I did keep one year's six-year plan that shows the way they were doing it then, and the way they're doing it now is entirely different. But there is some funds available that you can switch.
And you think that money came from which fund and went into which fund?
The regular construction fund. For instance, the road going out of Nicholsville is Twin Springs High School, leaves 680 is the number. That road was on the regular construction six-year plan in the '90s. It's still not paved. And the few years that I had the six-year plans for both, they took somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million out of the regular construction fund and used it to pave the gravel roads that had been paving in as rule additions that should have been paved prior.
Is that secondary construction?
It's secondary, yes. Now, where you can take money from the primary funds, as you requested, I don't know. But I know that they were taking money out of the secondary regular construction budget and using it on the gravel improvements.
Okay. The rule addition has about dried up.
Yes.
We got done, we were getting $30,000 or $40,000 a year or something.
I can't remember the last one we did, it's been probably.
Revolver Drive.
Revolver Drive is the last one that I can remember coming in.
It's been several years of.
Well, it's been eight or 10 years, probably.
It's been a while, I can't remember.
But.
Well, everything they were trying to do is real rusty stuff, and they limited money that's in there, and so, I had never heard of this, it's called a regular construction plan.
That's what I'm saying. They have, I don't know what you folks get, and I don't know what the county gets from VDOT, but it's been eight or 10 years since I have seen the full budget for the regular construction and the gravel improvements. I don't know how they're doing it now, but I know that the next road that is unscheduled to be paved, of the gravel roads, was one that was taken in as a rule addition. And I just went out when VDOT got us leaving, and I was talking to them, and that road was on the regular construction plan. And that, as I said, that's what I was raising cane about. And some of you remember very well, asking who we had to know, what we had to do to get on the priority list. And I was told, well, they call that a different name, and that's where you can call it anything you wanted, but a gravel road is a gravel road. Have one list for the gravel roads, and let us all come up in the same ladder, one step at a time.
One thing that Dr. Redmond did was submit a letter that he had here last month, and hopefully it gets some traction towards our people. And the letter, the content of it just basically was saying, this primary road maintenance fund be used to be used somewhere besides where they were used, because it wasn't needed. Some of those they paved wasn't, didn't, it was nothing wrong with the road. And like where the sheriff lives, I mean, they paved out there about a mile or so, and they've stopped, but it just takes just one road and somehow make 250 miles of it, whatever, but the letter he sent was in, the intent was to bring money from that fund down from the primary maintenance to secondary paving.
I understand that.
So hopefully that will happen, and it may get some traction, I think maybe it will.
The most attractive thing about that request, I thought, was that we're not asking for any more money.
That's right.
And they probably almost never get a request.
I understand that.
That doesn't require money.
I understand.
But we're not asking for an extra dime, just some flexibility and some common sense at our local level, and I don't think that they really know what's going on down here. And the rule addition thing, you know, it's my gut feeling that it dried up at the state level because there aren't many rule additions in other areas other than here. I mean, you get out in flatland of Virginia, and all those roads have all been taken in, and they're all paved, and they all look nice, and there's no need for rule additions. And you get down to, we've got one county or two counties in the whole state that need some little short roads paved, and they say, well, if we've got to cut the state budget, that's a good place to cut it, because we don't need that money anyway.
I agree.
But Scott County has a lot of them, you know.
A lot of the rule additions that has been taken in in Scott County has been in subdivisions that they've gone out and put a CalPAT in a subdivision and then asked VDOT to take it, and they've taken it as rule additions. The reason there's not rule additions in the other counties, they have subdivision ordinance that requires the roads to be paved when they build. And that's another issue. But as we're saying, there is a certain amount of money instead of paving one or two roads in the county this year, it's worth looking at the code to see how much of the other money that you can get out of that construction budget. Because I know they did it for years. I know it was done. I can show you in black and white where it was done, by their records, and that's all time I'll take it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we move to item 13. County Attorney Adams, Ms. Kegler.
I have one resolution for you all to consider. I sent it to you earlier in the month, and it's in your packets. It's a housekeeping matter from when the Duffield Development Authority was dissolved in 2011. There was no successor organization named that everybody thought that was taken care of then, but it just, it was never formally done. So this resolution that you all would consider, and the other three governing bodies that made up the DDA will consider, is to name the EDA of Scott County as the successor organization to the DDA, mostly to manage the industrial park in Duffield. There's protective covenants for the industrial park that there needs to be an authority where those businesses can go to and resolve any issues, so there's not been anybody to do that, and issues are going to keep coming up that I think someone needs to be in that position, so.
Well, I'll say a little bit about that. I was on that Board when it dissolved, and for the most part, or the vast majority of the part, everybody agreed upon what you're saying here, and I didn't even recall that that wasn't officially documented or voted on. Obviously, there was contention there from a party about that, but it wasn't lead-wise or per city or district. It was one individual in particular. But the whole time while we were going through the dissolution process, it was stated numerous times that the Scott County EDA would be the successor organization, because for one, it's in Duffield, and they have the regional park down there, and it was just a no-brainer where it's in Scott County, and the Scott County EDA would take it over. And it was just a no-brainer where it's in Scott County, and Scott County EDA would take it over. If for whatever reason, it just didn't get followed through. I don't recall that, but that's been, it's been a while back, so I don't know how that happened.
Just fell through the cracks, I think, with anything else. But I know that was the intent. So Norton passed their resolution last night, and Lee County passed theirs on November 21st. And I think Wise is going to take it up this month.
All right. You have a resolution in front of you and had a chance to go through it. Housekeeping to make things flow better and give somebody some responsibility for answering any problems that may arise down there.
Well, and a problem with that that could arise, I mean, you want that industrial area and park where the DDA kind of controlled to work very professional and approachable. And it's starting to look low and kempt because we always in the past kept the scrubber down and all that kind of stuff along the creek bank and everything, and it needs, it needs one, it needs trimmed back.
Okay.
But we've got plenty inmates out there.
All right, other discussion. All right, open the floor for any action on this resolution as presented.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution as written.
All right. Mr. Compton makes a motion. We approve it as presented. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hood seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. All right.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item 14. Ms. Storrs.
For claims this month, our available general fund balance is $10,308,236.01, and that amount is after the claims that are being presented. Total early claims for this month totaled $36,613.44. And our total claims for December are $835,762.26. And some of the larger items were fire and rescue payments totaled $303,452.10. Regional jail monthly payment, $195,852.17. Workers' comp insurance, $16,619.50. Advanced disposal tipping fees, $30,137.94. Appalachian juvenile commission, $22,060. And Scott County Economic Development Authority, $55,798.56, and that was reimbursement for July through December 2017 rent. So total claims, $835,762.26.
All right. That's a significant lick for one month, but these things come in occasionally in the same month.
And a lot of these people have been waiting till tax revenue started coming in to make their request.
Okay.
That disposal fee, is that pretty close to normal? Is it up, down?
It was a 30% CPI on that one, Amy.
They sent us a notice, but they haven't started invoicing it yet.
The increase.
That seems to be what it is about every month. It's usually what, 28 to 30?
You'll see that just a little bit higher, the cause of the CPI adjustment, 30%. But that's, we've had a pretty heavy month this month.
I just noticed you, and it seemed like every time you go by the dumpsters, it's about full. I don't worry it all comes from.
It's never ending the string. Have we seen any increase or decrease where we closed them on Sunday?
We saw an impact immediately on them being overfilled on Mondays and having to close. We haven't had to do that out in the county at all. Boxing gap, we've had to close a couple of times, but it's been more of a truck logistic problem than the scheduling problem.
Any complaints about it, about having them closed on Sunday?
Just minor complaints. I think most of the people could see that as well. I was getting way more complaints about them getting there Monday morning, and they had closed until a truck got there.
I'm probably the only one complaining about the Sunday deals. All right. All right, your claims are in front of you. Need a, any other questions or need a motion to pay bills?
So, buddy.
Mr. Herron makes a motion. We paid claims for this month. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mann seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. All right. Amount was $835,762.26. All right.
The next item I have is the appointment of two individuals for membership on the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. Myself and John Kilgore Jr. are willing to serve if that's what you so choose. If not, we need two members either way.
All right.
I put the motion to have Frieda Storrs and John Kilgore Jr. serve in that capacity. Do any of them serve?
No, but maybe say the county administrator and the economic development director.
There you go.
In addition to their next four in state, five of them, just so it would carry forward and trace out somebody else in that position.
Mr. Hood makes a motion that the county administrator, which currently is Frieda Storrs, and the economic development director, which is currently John Kilgore Jr., serve on the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. All right.
Okay, the next item I have is regarding the new flagpole discussion. And I've got quotes from two different businesses on the actual flagpole. And the cheapest one of those has come in at $1,830. And I have two bids on landscaping. One is $2,000, and one is $1,325, but they vary significantly, significantly in what the plan is. And installation, I have one price that was shocking. It was $3,250. And that was to remove our current flagpole and relocate it to the courthouse and install in our new flagpole, which we will provide, and the concrete pad, $3,250. So I've reached out, I got these late yesterday on the installation, to Eric Lane at Pals and ask if he would supply me with the information on who does their flagpole. So I have that, and I'm going to contact them and continue working this price down. But worst-case scenario, right now, we're at $7,080. That's installation, flagpole, and landscaping. So if you want to move forward with a two as a motion, we can do that and continue to work down to get the best deal, or we can put it off and continue to get the best deal, and we'll look at it again at our January meeting.
Why'd you say that number was $7,000?
$7,080. That would be the highest that it would be.
It was come from our contingency fund?
Yes. Right now, your balance is around $34,000.
Yeah, most.
$34,000.
A good chance it would be a little, at least a little less than this.
Yeah, that's the most it would be.
Be the max. I'll certainly leave it up to you all and how you want to do this. My suggestion would be, rather than bring it back to the board and just beat it up again for a few hundred dollars, if this is what you all want to do and you want to move ahead with the project at all, my suggestion would be to put it in the lap of the staff and give them the authority to negotiate it down and approve funding up to the number we've got today.
Well, if they know we've approved this higher amount, they might not say we have approved it, so. So that might be kind of harder to negotiate down if they know you've approved this.
Well, they don't know that they're going to get it, though.
No.
That's true.
I mean, they don't know they're going to get it.
I understand, but.
And the new businesses aren't going to know where it may own.
Yeah, well. I'll make a motion that we appropriate up to that amount from our contingency fund for the purchase and installation and landscaping of the flagpole.
And authorize staff to.
Negotiate.
Negotiate to deal.
That's right.
Okay.
We'll continue to get bids and see what we can.
Mr. Mann has a motion in place. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Herron seconds that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Post. All right.
Okay, the next thing I have is the legislative reception in Richmond is on January the 25th. For the past six or seven years, Scott County has not contributed to the cost of that reception. And the information that I've received, the cost this year is around $22,000. And Dickinson County is spearheading that to get everything set up as far as the food and that type of thing for the reception. And I just wanted to know if the county was interested in contributing this year. I think they're asking each locale to try to contribute $2,500. So I wanted to mention that, as well as if any of the board members would like to attend. I know I've talked to Mr. Mann, and we can do one more if someone's interested.
If no one is interested in going, Rodney Baker went last year. He's the director of the planning commission, chairman, I guess. He said he'd be interested in going if nobody else on the board wanted to go. He did a real good job reps in the county last year, so anyway, if no one wants to, I'd encourage some of y'all to go. It's really informative. It's what we do and making legislation at their location. It's pretty good. But if someone wants to go, I'd encourage it, but if not, Rodney said he would go if nobody else on the board wanted to go.
Is anybody interested?
Uh, maybe.
Uh, oh.
What's interesting is we leave early on that Thursday morning, and it's an all-day thing to have the reception that night. And the next day, we go to the museum, we meet with them, and we meet not only with our local, our Kilgore and Carricko, we meet with Pillion and some of those folks too, and other persons, states. So it's worth going. It's really worth going to it. And I don't mind going. I went, I think, about every time except once. And but I enjoy going, but it's worthwhile. And then the $2,500, I'd recommend that because with what we get back, I think it's worth doing that.
All right. If we put money into that contingency money, too.
If that's something you're interested in contributing to going forward when you put in the budget, when that comes around.
Bid for the next budget year, you're talking about doing or done it out of contingency this year?
It would have to be out of contingency this year.
You're doing it this year.
But she said if that's something we're interested in doing going forward, like every year, we can put it in the budget.
Well, I remember being on the budget committee back when we took it out. And so, but I do recommend putting it back in when the time comes. It's worth it. Whether it is this year or not, it's any year of the year, but I do recommend putting it back in the budget when the budget time comes.
Yeah, and we can explain that if you don't want to do it out of contingency. And we'll try to put it in our budget next year if it's true.
That'd be the right approach, I think.
We did not contribute last year. Is that right?
It's been about six, seven years, the last thirteen I could find that the minutes that we had contributed. So that when we don't contribute, the other counties pay a larger portion.
Well, if we do $1,000 this year, and then put it back in the budget next year for the $2,500. And I just felt we ought to do something to absorb part of that cost.
I'm fine with that, too. If you want to put that forward for motion.
I will. There'll be $1,000 from the contingency fund for the legislative reception in January.
Mr. Mann makes a motion for $1,000 for legislative reception in January from contingency. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Compton seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
All right. Want to know? All right.
And under the miscellaneous section that I have, I attended the work-ready community ACT training, and that fee was $200. I can either try to take that out of my budget somewhere, or if you'd be interested in paying that fee out of contingency, just let me know whichever way you prefer. There's also training in February and May. That would be $200 each as well. So any suggestions? Can I try to find it in my budget for this round?
Do you have any lineups that you see? Any kind of surplus? I mean, I don't. If you, we've cut everything.
Well, we can get to, we can see how it goes to the end, and then if we need it, add it in there.
Okay.
For contingency, if you want to do that. Just like, I'll see what I can come up with, and then if I need help, I'll let you know.
All right.
And John wanted me to remind you that the EDA Christmas dinner is next Wednesday at 6:00 and that the board's invited to attend. And then for the January meeting, it's on January the 3rd. The offices will be closed the first and second for holidays. So would you like to adjust that meeting date or time? We could possibly do it at 1:00 o'clock again that day like we did a previous meeting, or we could possibly change the date.
A block would be good.
I'm fine. It would be for the staff's benefit, not ours, I guess.
Well, we just wouldn't have time to get everything ready for an 8:30 meeting.
Okay.
With it being that early in the month, claims and things like that, it would be really hard.
Can you do it? The third?
There's no school.
There isn't?
I would think.
He's no school. He can do that.
I don't know. I have to look at the schedule the night, but they may have a game that day. I ain't sure. I can't be wrong top of the head.
There's no game.
Definitely, definitely have one the second, pretty sure.
Near the day.
I mean, it's starting about 4:00 o'clock.
Well, we can get you out here in three hours.
Ain't no way. Ain't no way. We've said that a lot.
Well, that's, I mean, staff needs to, I guess y'all need to tell them, let's go ahead and say it at one o'clock. And...
We'll need to vote on that, can we just designate that? We'll need to vote on that, too.
As long as it's at the end and advertised, that won't actually be a problem. Yeah, if you adjourn to that day at one o'clock, that's...
All right.
It's one o'clock, please, January the...
Third.
Third.
We need to deal with one. All right.
That's all I have, sorry.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Anything for Ms. Starnes? Ms. Kegley, before we move on? All right. Item fifteen, Mr. Dishman with us today. Bringing all sorts of...
Good tidings and great joy.
That's right.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Pass these out to members of the press first. Do you all want some? Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to answer any questions and also give you enough day honor projects like I have been. And I won't read it all to you, I'll just kind of hit the high marks. And you just interrupt me anytime you ask questions. And, but before I forget, I'm sure that some of you are in touch with Marshall, and I have been. And probably already know things progressing according to what he's told me as recently as yesterday. And taking good care of him, and he's hit some good benchmarks. And so, continue to remember Marshall, he's also on the BSA board. We've completed a couple of water lines recently since I was here. Pendleton Chapel Lane and Majestic Mountain. Pendleton Chapel Lane was, was where people desperately needed some good drinking water to replace some contaminated wells. And Majestic Mountain is a subdivision, it's a development that developer had paid for that extension. Big Moxon Phase One is nearly complete, and they're working on Phase One A, for which we got funding since I was here. And our crew is, is working on a water line extension on Bellamy-Dipton Road to serve some folks who are, several of which are hauling water to their home from us nearby spring. Trying to get that in for them before winter, but apparently that's coming in the next couple of days. So we will do our best to get it as soon as possible. Our improvements to the Duffield wastewater plant, construction will be started any time. Daniel Boone Sewer Project. We are waiting, we have a problem with an easement or two. But then there's a hurdle of getting a, getting permits from the Corps of Engineers, which is, which is very time-consuming, late, and difficult. And I'll be dealing with that issue hopefully soon, maybe get some progress. Wanted to highlight number six, underfunded Fairview Waterline Extension. We are required to get additional funding, and so we will be seeking additional funding from Lynn and Wisco. We did get some since I was here from Coalfields Water Development Fund, but we'll need some more. That was required by Rural Development. I guess one of the biggest news, which you probably saw in Lisa's paper, The Star, is that our board accepted a very, very good funding offer from Rural Development to, to do a large sewer project in Yuma and in Hiltons. Let me highlight that the potential customers have until December eleventh to sign up for those projects and still get the free sewer tab. After which it will be one thousand dollars until construction is completed. And then two thousand dollars upon completion of construction. On the second page, not yet funded Robineck Alley and Hunter's Valley West. We actually have a funding offer, but not an economically feasible funding offer. And we are still, still working to get an economically feasible funding offer for water, water on those two roads. Excuse me. A couple of projects that have been on the list I have combined as we have embarked on this comprehensive county drinking water extension effort to look at the whole, the county as a whole. And so we're calling it, I'm calling it, informally, I'm calling it the next big thing. But, because it's a huge project, but the Central Scott County Water Project. We're working with Rural Development and applying for engineering funds. And then hopefully in January, we will have a, a meeting with various funding agencies. Host a meeting possibly here in this room to inform the agencies what we're doing, the need, the demand for water, and present some facts and figures on water quality and number of users who have signed up. But it will serve basically the area north and east of Gate City, between the Clinch and the Clinch River, and those communities that I've listed there. So we're trying to keep our foot on the gas on these projects. And to try to get water to everyone that needs it as soon as possible. And sewer service, also where we can afford it. All it takes is money.
All right, comments, questions?
Well, one question. When a property owner has more, like he owns like four or five, he's got a mobile home park or whatever, does he need to submit five or six, whatever he's got, or he can just do it with one?
He can, he can submit one for each, or he can submit one and list, list those. Yes. You know, we need nine-one-one addresses or
Each.
For each one. Or property tax numbers if there's not a, if there's not a structure dwelling on the property. Right, but he can, he can submit, if it's, if he would prefer he can submit an individual one for each one, that's fine. Either way, you can just combine them. That's a question we get, all, that's a good question.
But although not yet funded, hanging on Parkway Water
Yes.
Where I live. My water's fine, it's good, great, it's good water, but my neighbors sure do need it.
They do, and, and the engineers are, are working on that.
They're definitely bucking cage for one of them, their water, I talked to his wife long ago, it's just about black, she says black stuff in. It's nothing, but it flushes, they can't use it for anything.
Yes, I look for her to call me again, because it's been a while, but I, I know, and we, we've got to get that done fast.
I just want many, I mean, but the thing about that, it's so close to the Dunkin' Water Source, I mean, I'm talking about. They can see, they can see the water source from their house.
And
That's how close it is.
He's closest, really, and then, but then there's several others beyond on the other side of the track.
I want to compliment Little B Construction. Again, they're up there in Snowflake doing that job. There's a lot of rock up there, and they're tearing up jack, and it looks like you've set off dynamite, and then you come back at night, and it's all cleaned up, smooth, and sprawled over, and, I mean, they really, considering what they've been up against, they've done a great job of making that cosmetic and doing a pretty efficient job.
Thank you, I'll tell them that, and we're real happy to have them doing it. Do a great job.
Anyone else?
Anything, Sally, or Daryl, can you all?
Did a good job.
Are there any questions?
Good job. Little B is also out there with them for maybe years. Good pay, good, good work there.
BSA is in a good, let me say, we're in a satisfactory financial situation. Of course, we require help with these projects, you know, grants and good, good long terms. But operating budget-wise, we're in satisfactory condition. And, and we have a stable staff and who work hard. And they enjoy their work, and we try to keep them happy, and they're, and they just do a great job. Things are good. They've got a lot of work to do, though.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that report.
Yes, sir. If you've got any questions about that other thing I gave you, Mr. Jim, you can let me know.
Okay, I will get in touch with you about that.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right. We move to item sixteen. Anything for closed decisions? All right. Item sixteen, our final comments requests from board concerning anything we've done today or, or any other items. Mr. Jeter?
I'm good.
Mr. Jeter's happy today. Mr. Compton?
I have one complaint that we had a call to go out to the, the dog warden and couldn't get a response, but in the Taylor Town community, but I don't know why, I don't know the details of what happened. But I did get a complaint that there was some reason that the, the animal patrol officer couldn't come out. Like I say, I don't know what the details, that there was something said about somebody been bit or a dog been loose or whatever it was, and couldn't, couldn't get the patrol officer out. Only thing I have.
All right.
Do you have any contact information from the person?
Five, yes. One contact person.
If you could get that to me, I'll give a call, find out the particulars of it.
Okay.
Investigate that.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Haron?
I'm okay.
All right, Mr. Mann?
I wish everybody Merry Christmas, and good luck, bless all of you this Christmas season.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hood?
Same for me, Merry Christmas. Thank the staff very much.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff of Scott County, they, they have done a real good job and continue to do so. I know there's things like, that's all they get is complaints, and that's really, I guess that's the reason they're here. But they still do a good job, Frieda and Sally and all the people that are here at the office. Like to wish them a Merry Christmas and a good job that they have been doing. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. I don't have anything else, other than what we've talked about today. There are a few ongoing issues, and we'll continue to work on those. And staff or myself will keep the board updated as things change. Anything, anything? Okay. There is nothing else, this board will adjourn until December third.
January.
I mean, excuse me, January third, here in this room at 1:00 P.M.